Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande study session on August 1st. Welcome to August. I think it was just January yesterday.
Yeah, it seemed like it.
And tonight, we have a presentation on our wastewater reclamation expansion project. So, Mr. Rains, you want to start this off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I will give just a brief overview and then ask Mr. Itel to introduce our guests, who I understand may be in the parking lot dealing with another issue at this moment.
Uh-oh.
The mayor and council is well aware that staff has been indicating that we are in the process of looking for expansion opportunities with our wastewater services. Primarily, really, two primary issues that we actually have been focused on for the past 12 months. One being the discharge of our effluent that is processed and treated. And number two, the potential expansion of our water reclamation facility. And our team has been working along with Mr. Kevin Lewis and Mr. Itel on a variety of solutions. And this evening, we're here to present what we believe is the number-one solution that actually will resolve a number of the elements related to our wastewater treatment facility. I will say that when we're moving into the presentation, this is going to be focused on the treatment and processing and the discharge. It will not be focused on our sewer main lines around town. Obviously, growth is really unprecedented today, and we believe that this is a solution to assist with this. So, I'll ask Dwayne to come up and lay the foundation for the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Larry. Mayor, city councilman, persons, excuse me. I'm an old man, you know, it's hard to break 70-some years of saying those things. So, about six months ago, Sunrise Engineering, who does our wastewater modeling, figured out that in two to three years, we were going to have some issues with wastewater capacity. So, we started looking around how we could handle that and put together, I think, one of the best teams of consultants in Arizona. So, we have Sunrise Engineering, Hilgarth Wilson, and Wilson and Company. And they're all working together. And we're trying to rapidly, in the next two years, do a lot of improvements to the wastewater system. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Impeccable timing.
So, feel a little bump. Can feel it. Just a little like that.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Did you get a chance to catch your breath?
Sure. No, I'm good. A little more traffic coming down here than I anticipated, sorry about that.
It's I-10, needs to be expanded.
It does, it does.
We're working on it.
I'm sure Wilson and Company would be happy to do that.
Any help you can give us, we'd appreciate it.
All right. So, I'm Brian McBride, for those of you that don't know me. I'm Wilson and Company. I'm the head of water wastewater for the firm. And I've been focused a lot on City of Casa Grande lately. So, I'm going to go briefly through this presentation. So, we've been working on this for several months, as you probably know. And when we came onboard to address this back in October, I think, and the initial problem was that, you know, you guys have a lot of development coming onboard. It's a big train coming down the track, and you got a little behind on the infrastructure from the wastewater standpoint to do that. And so, looking at that, in order to not hold up that development, the short timeframe is 24 to 36 months to get that infrastructure in place. And, you know, one of the largest problems was the existing WRFs limited to 6 million gallons a day of effluent disposal. It's a 12 million gallon a day plant, but you can only dispose of 6 million gallons a day of the treated effluent. So, when I first got involved, the city was looking at investigating a west-side WRF. They had worked with another consultant, another firm, that was headed that direction. But, you know, when we took a look at it, there's no way you could have done that in that amount of time. So, we suggested that the city take a look at other options and see what, okay, let's do what we need to do to get to where you need to be and look at the options to do that. And we thought we could come up with something. So, you know, that, right there, that was the earliest commissioning date for that was 2025, and the program costs were going to be over $100 million to go that direction. So, we thought we could come up with some different ideas for that. So, we did the wastewater capacity study, starting, I think, in November, first week of November. And so, the new plan that was developed was to design, permit, and construct a new lift station on the west side. Because you have a lot of capacity potential at the existing WRF. You have plenty of acreage there, and it's a good, solid plant. And so, it would be quicker to expand that, and I'll go into that in a little bit. So, if you expand the capabilities of the existing WRF, then you can put a force main from that, and that's an old figure there, but that was when we were first working on it, force main over to the wastewater plant and, you know, take care of the west side that way. And then, the east side is a different issue that we'll talk about in a second. So, but then, a big part of it was to develop the effluent disposal alternatives, right? So, you had to solve that issue about the 6 MGD limitation. So, we took a look at that, and then, you know, we needed, had that goal of getting that infrastructure in and commissioned by 2024. So, once we put that all together about how this would work, that program took it down to about $34 million. We completed that study in January 2022 and then moved into the conceptual design study. So, the city said, yeah, we'd like that plan. Let's take a look at that and do the conceptual design to say, okay, specifically, how will we do that, and let's get closer with the cost estimates, right? So, this is conception, that was, you know, just basically the plan. Let's actually flesh out the concept to see exactly how that would get done. And so, that's what we started right after that. So, that was a conceptual design study, which is finished now. I think the final DCR, the sealed version, will be out next week, I believe. But, you know, we've pretty much done all of that. So, that included background investigations, really go through all the existing documents, look at the utilities that are out there, look at the pipeline routes where we need to have them, look at the wastewater plant, make sure that we could do what we thought we could do, you know, talk with the operations staff. And then, have a master planning update, so get all the latest information, work with the planning department, and say, okay, make sure we're accounting for everything that we need to account for. So, that was part of the project. And then, there was a funding acquisition assistance. We happen to specialize in federal and state grant funding. So, we helped that and got several of those things in progress for the funding acquisition. And then, we did the effluent disposal and the reuse analysis, as I talked about, and then finished the design report with the cost estimating and scheduling that I'll show you here coming up. Effluent disposal, that's one of the first things we approached. I mean, these were all kind of done in parallel, but that was a very important one. So, we had hydrogeologists onboard, actually, two different hydrogeologists. And originally, we thought that the injection wells might be good because they're pretty efficient if you can get good yields out of them, good capacity. But it turned out that none of the five sites that we looked at were viable, just weren't cost-effective. So, we took a revised approach with the hydrogeologist. And that is, so, the primary one is we developed a reclaimed water distribution system. The idea is that you have all these new industrial, commercial users coming in. And if we provide them with high-quality A++ effluent, that's a very valuable commodity that they can use and will use. And so, that would be an 18-inch water line from the plant to the far end of the reclaimed water distribution system. It's about 5 and 1/2 miles long as a plan. And then, along with that, we have recharge basins at the Cactus Mine site. So, we talked to them about using their site. That's a proposed thing, that's not worked out with them yet, but that would provide significant recharge of the aquifer, along with the ones that work on, and the current WRF at the plant site that are 2.1 MGD. Once they get done, that's in progress right now. And then, of course, an 18-inch reclaimed water line to the Cactus Mine, because they also want to use 1 MGD of water effluent at that site. And then, that could be installed pretty quickly using horizontal directional drilling. Because one of the tricky parts, of course, is getting across the rail and the highway, and that can take a long time. But if we do horizontal directional drilling, we investigated that, and it's completely feasible there, and that makes it a lot quicker and easier to get done. So, and then, a very key to this is we went and talked to ADEQ because, you know, we don't want you to get in a situation where you're limited again if one of these things don't work out. So, we talked to them about, so if we run that line down, it just happens to go down about, you know, 2 miles that way and 3 miles south, and gets you down in the area near where the Francisco Grande Resort is. And it just so happens that the river, which at that point is an effluent-dominated stream, is there. So, we thought it might be good, okay, let's see if we can do an Azizzi's discharge point there. And we talked to ADQ, and they said it's perfectly viable, it qualifies. And so, so that we can put, we're planning on putting, if you need to, any additional effluent, assuming that can be permitted, which they assured us it can, can be discharged at that point at the end of the reclaimed water distribution system line. So, that's a very good alternative to have. So, going into conceptual design study specifics here, so, you can see on this particular figure, the wastewater facility is to your right, the bottom right there. And then, there's a couple, there's a, the blue line, that is the effluent, the reclaimed water distribution lines. You can see the one going up to the mine site, and they propose recharge basins up there. And then, those are both along Corston Road, and then, that one goes up along the railroad to the mine site. And then, the red box right there is, that's the lift station. And the yellow line coming back then is the force main coming back from that lift station. So, this is really kind of where that fleshed out. There's more to it than that, but that's the first part of it. And so, the, so that site there and the lift station, and I'll talk about in more detail in just a second, is being obtained, I believe, for no cost from that developer that has that property there, and it's just out of the floodplain. So, it'll be quick to get permitted and built on that. And I think that's an initial phase of 5.5, I'm sorry, 5,500 GPM, and then, up to 7,500 GPM expandable. So, here I show the, so down Bianca Road, that reclaimed water distribution line continues on down. And that's the proposed new secondary effluent discharge point right by the, you know, just west of the Francisco Grande Resort, right there. So, then, getting into the actual design concept report, we talk about the west-area lift station, that one I just showed, and that three-acre site located on developer land, acquisition pending. It'll basically be, I said 5,500, 5,600 GPM firm capacity with expandable to 9,700 GPM. Shows you how good my memory is. And then, it'll have dual 18-inch force mains with the second main valved off until needed. So, really, you need to put two of them in there because the total capacity you're going to need, you're going to need two mains. And the reason you do two is that because if it's too big, you do one, but it doesn't cost that much more because it's the same trench you can put them in. And if you do one, the velocities will be so slow that it'll be very smelly by the time it gets to the plant. So, you want to keep those velocities up, keep deposits from going in there. So, having those two mains together, one for the future as your flow goes up. You don't want to start too low, that's a common mistake engineers make, is that they oversize it in the beginning, and then, the velocities are so slow, move so slowly, especially in Arizona, it cooks on the way and becomes septic. So, so that would be dual 18s, but the other one will be valved off until you need it. And then, we also included the initial influent sewers. So, that includes a 15-inch line along where the initial development's going in on the industrial park there, along Corston, and then, a 36- to 40-inch north-south interceptor along Bianca Road. And that's where the developers out there can hook into, so that's also in the works. Here's a blow-up of that lift station site. So, you can see here in the upper corner, you see where that's positioned by the floodplain there. And then, so the two, the dual force mains will come out to the west and then down and back along the Corston Road alignment. And then, you can see those, that's the sewer. See the 15-inch lateral I was talking about? Yes? Do you have a question?
Yes. What exactly does a lift station do?
I'm sorry, I should have said that.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. So, a lift station is basically, it's a pump station. They call it a lift station because it's lifting the hydraulic head of wastewater. So, where you can't flow by gravity, you have to pump it up. And so, that lift station basically serves to take the west side, which is, you know, not, is downhill, so you get the sewage won't flow uphill. It'll take the sewage from the west side and pump it over to the plant. So, I apologize for not being more clear on that. But that lift station is, they're pretty simple and pretty quick to build, obviously way cheaper than a new wastewater plant. It does take some, you know, some operation and maintenance stuff, but not nearly as much as a new wastewater plant. And so, that lift station will then, it'll take all the flows from the west side and bring them to the existing plant.
Thank you.
Yes. Now, the 140-foot right-of-way is also not yet acquired. We don't need that much, but that's what the city would like to do for future stuff. I mean, those lines look pretty thick, but it's really, they don't take a lot of space on those lines. It's not really to scale on the lines. We can also see that blue line running through, and that's where the reclaimed water distribution center runs right through there and down to the south as well. Any other questions at this point? Okay. Then, the water reclamation facility. So, this was very fortunate because, you know, the, based on the stuff from the west side and then the new development on the east side, that you're going to need more capacity than 12 MGD in your plant. So, but you don't have time to make new basins. Like, new basins, you know, you have to excavate, do the cast-and-place concrete and all that. That's probably a three-year cycle that you need to get through if it, if all goes well. However, because of the type of plant you have, and you happen to have a, there's a pretreatment basin that was used for your commercial, you know, I guess, high-nutrient users, I guess, the Abbott was used to pretreat that. But now that you have that on the pretreatment, that's not necessary anymore. But we're able to convert that into an equalization basin, which means that downstream of that, you can increase the capacity of plant without having to increase the downstream processes on that, with the exception of the biological process. Because the biological process isn't instantaneous, it goes over, you know, a week's mean cell residence time. So, that, the biological process, if it's 12 MGD, it's 12 MGD. However, we have a lot of experience in retrofitting those type of processes because there's different ways to do that that are very successful. And so, to get to the compressed schedule, to do everything without the basins, basically, the two keys of that are to use the equalization basin as well as increase the process by a fixed film addition. So, that's called Integrated Fixed Film Activated Sludge Process. And what it really is, is those are, they're cages of material that are put into the basins that have biogrowth on them. And so, you have biogrowth in the mixed liquor and in the biological process, but you also, you have it suspended, then you also have it fixed on a film on these units that are independently aerated, and that can add capacity. So, it, not to get too technical, but increases your effective mixed liquor. So, what the limiting factor on a biological process like that, an aeration basin, is how much biological mass you can put per cubic foot of space, of volume in your tank. And so, what that process does is it enables you to have more biological per cubic foot of tank. And we have enough space in there, and we were talking to NTEx, which is a company that has retrofitted this exact same type of plant successfully. And we reviewed their model, and we can get to 18 MGD fairly easily on that. And so, so also with the upgrade and the expansion concept then, you have to increase the pumping capacity. Luckily, that the design of it will accommodate changing out the pumps and not having to redo the building for the effluent pump station to take it to 18 MGD with a 36 MGD peak. We're going to need to mitigate odors because we're using EQ basins. So, we're going to bring in superoxygenation system, which basically supersaturates the effluent with oxygen, and then, it takes a while to dissipate, and that gets rid of your sulfides. It basically oxidizes all your sulfides and prevents H2S production. So, that'll carry all the way through, and then, the equalization basin will be aerated. So, the odors will be well mitigated on that. And then, as I said, the equalization flow will keep, instead of the 36 MGD peak, that'll keep it at 24 MGD peak for the downstream processes, which they're already designed at. So, that's fortunate that we're able to do that. And then, as I said, the IFAS modules. And then, there's, because we're going to be doing recharge and reclaimed water, there's some reliability upgrades that we are recommending, including tertiary filtration redundancy. You just need to make sure that that, if you have a plant upset, that you don't have to put that water out. So, there's some reliability and consistency upgrades that we're recommending. And then, of course, to modify the effluent pump station to pump all that flow into the reclaimed water distribution system. Okay. Here's a few, just process flow diagrams, if you're interested. You can see here from the effluent pumps, right in the middle top there, to the superoxygenation system, and then, on through the existing grit separators that are, they are fine for 36 MGD, and then to the equalization basin, and then, through all the process to the EQ pumps. And then, the next slide shows, from there, goes through the oxidation ditches. And you can see that's all the modules that are going to go in. Those are the IFAS modules that'll be included, and then, the upgrade of the effluent pump station and the new disc filters on the side. So, okay.
Is it clean to the, is it potable when it's, when the third boy came out?
Or is it usable? No, the effluent won't be considered potable water. It'll be very, it'll be the highest-quality effluent, though, that is produced, with the exception of, like, if we had RO, that would be technically higher, but it's very high-quality effluent. So, it's, the regulations allow unlimited use for all reuse classifications. So, it's very high quality. But not potable.
Yeah.
I guess indirectly so, because you recharge that, and it takes it out of the aquifer somewhere else, right? So, you, and that'll come into play. That's why you want to do the, you know, the recharge is very important for your whole water balance as a community. You have to put some of that back, as much as you can, back into the aquifer. That's on the water side, then, that's not my area right now. Okay. So, summary and conclusion. So, the west-area sewer collection capacity, that'll be 2.7 MGD by 2024. So, we'll be able to take up to 2.7 MGD from the new developments out there by 2024. Reclaimed water delivery available to that entire west area by the first quarter 2024. The effluent disposal capacity up to 18 MGD, which is what we need by Q2 2024. And then, the wastewater treatment capacity, also 18 MGD by Q2 2024. So, so all, you know, May, June, 2024, all this stuff should be in place and running. That's the plan. So, then, the important part that you guys, I think, probably care a lot about is the program's schedule and costs. So, this is the cost that we're put together, and this is a summarize. There's a lot of numbers and spreadsheets behind this one, but this is the consolidated spreadsheet. So, you can see on the west-area sewer improvements, it includes that lift station, the force mains, the, you know, the installation under the railroad and highway, lateral sewers, all that stuff. And then, the reclaimed water system improvements and all that. And then, the water reclamation facility for the plant. And that all comes to right around, you see, there's a 15% contingency on that as well. And then, that has a total cost of around $40 million as opposed to, I think, $112 million previously. Okay. Now, we put this together in a, so by calendar year and fiscal year, so you can see where the cash flow would be. And so, this is how those projects all pan out from a schedule standpoint and what the cash flow for each of those projects will be, right? So, that goes from this current fiscal year. A lot of that's engineering, as we're getting these going, and then, more of the construction in 2024. And then, the ones that are, need to be done by, by, you know, I guess, Q3 2024, most of that is already done. So, some of the upgrades of the wastewater plant don't need to be done in order for this to happen, but that, so that extends out a little bit. But you can see here where the, where and when the money is going to be needed. Okay.
Brian, I have a quick question. So, the estimates in terms of the volume needs, you know, we're going from 12 MGD to, what, 18? Does that then take into effect development that may come, I mean, industrial development along with the east-side development area in terms of the large developments by Francisco Grande?
Yes, it does. Yeah, so we had Sunrise Engineering cover the modeling stuff, and they worked very closely with the city on all the perspective. And that's where that 18 MGD number comes from because that's all the ones that are, will be in, that, or maybe in, that will need the capacity.
Some of it could be Copper Mountain. Some of it could be...
Yes, Mr. Mayor's eyes. Copper Mountain is, would actually end up, because of the topography in that area, a portion of Copper Mountain would be serviced by our existing plant. And the western portion of Copper Mountain would likely be serviced by a new plant even more westernly than our existing plant.
So, to the west of the lift station?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead.
I have a layman question. So, you had mentioned about it being financially better for that lift station. And with proper care and stuff, what's the actual lifespan of a lift station?
Oh, the lift, you know, that should be 25 years plus. I mean, at least 20 years before you need a rehab. That's how it'll be designed.
Thank you.
Matt?
Yeah. Thank you for your expertise, you went through that.
I appreciate it.
Pretty quickly.
You know, we are a bunch of wastewater nerds up here.
But that did include putting in the two 18-inch force mains, right? One that will be used first, and the other one will be capped off?
It includes both of them.
Both of them, okay.
It would be much more expensive if you did them separately.
Yep. And then, a little bit about the wastewater distribution system, or the reclaimed water distribution system that goes out near Francisco Grande area?
Right.
To recharge there?
No, it actually will recharge. The one recharge site that we are proposing is up the mine site. So, that'll go north of the Cactus Mine.
So, what's that one that, where does that go?
Which, that one...
The one that went down Bianco.
Yeah, the one that went down Bianco.
So, the one that goes down Bianco will be available for all the developments that are along that, and so there's...
Oh, so that'll be for you, for end-users, okay.
Yeah, so...
But the recharge would go up by the mine that you're talking about?
Yeah, the recharge, so there's two things...
So, that one will be recharged, that'll be used for industrial users to use effluent?
Right.
Okay.
But the mine also wants to use a full 1 MGD a day of that reclaimed water. So, they're going to be putting a pond up there of their own, and using it 1 MGD a day is what they've said they need. So, the recharge will be 2.5 million is the estimated capacity, and then, another million for the usage of the mine.
And then, we'd be getting credits for the recharge?
Yep. 100% credits on those recharge rather than the construction.
Because of the quality of the water?
That's correct. That's right.
Mr. Bell?
Just curiosity, at the mine, the water that's almost always at the bottom, is that water putrid? Is it settled, or is it usable, or...
So, I'm not sure, you mean the reclaimed water line, water that...
No, he's talking down in the pit, there's a pit.
Oh, down in the pit, yeah. I really, you know, I don't know what, I mean, the regulations are, they have to treat that if it goes anywhere. And I, you know, my company also does that, but it's not my area. That's industrial mine treatment. But I don't think that has an impact on this project.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Kind of to piggyback on the mayor's question, we talked about going from capacity of 12 MGD to 18. And you brought up several times that we aren't at that point where we can build a new basin. So, this is the way to go as far as the upgrade and expansion concept. So, you know, it seems, I feel pretty confident, because when you highlighted what that entails, you know, the increased pump capacity, mitigate odors, upgrade biological treatment. But I guess my question is, going from 12 to 18, can we go up anymore? Or is that the maximum? And do we, and that's why I wanted to see what this includes and how far out into the future this will be, and if this is the most we can go before we have to build a new basin, and when will we have to build a new basin?
It's, as you go above 18, there's other things that are going to have to be done, right? So, the, because there's a, the equalization basin, we haven't, we've said it's fine for 24. We don't know if it can, so it can equalize from 36 of your peak hour flow down to 24. Can it go 40 down to 24? We haven't looked at that. It probably can, but as you, as you increase it more, you're going to have to look at those processes and probably increase those, as well as, I definitely know that the effluent pump station, that is about, you're going to need to do a new effluent pump station and new effluent screens if you're going to go above that.
At some point, at some point in time, we've got to build some... At some point, at some point in time, we've got to build some additional wastewater treatment plants.
Well, you know, it's my opinion that, it's just my opinion, um, that there's plenty of room on that wastewater plant. I'm not sure why you would do a satellite plant anywhere.
Okay.
Um, I think it's much more efficient to have a centralized one. So I, I know there's some engineers who would disagree with me on that.
Okay. Matt?
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can just expand on that, just very briefly, and, and, and Mr., and, and Brian, Mr. McBride actually has outlined a number of reasons why we've elected to move down this path. We are actually studying other alternatives at this point.
Right.
On the east side, potential plants on the west side. But because of our ability to expand right on this site, it becomes the most practical and efficient manner to, to do so. And so that what really is what has driven us to this point.
And more immediate too, right?
And, and more media. That doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to look at other alternatives and study what, what Mr. McBride is talking about this evening in more detail. But, uh, uh, essentially staff is working on, uh, really conceptually having discussions on potential plants on the east side, for, for potential plants on the west side as well. But ultimately today, we're focused, and to give everybody a context, uh, we are processing roughly five to six M G D a day at our plant, uh, and, and as has been pointed out, we have the capacity of twelve. We take that to eighteen. We do, we'll, we'll have a little bit more of a runway, I'll use that term, uh, for us to really, to really study and evaluate our next phases. But Brian, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, that's, that's absolutely true. And, you know, when it comes to whether there's an, an east plant, a future east plant, there's a lot of factors that I haven't looked at that'll, you know, be in that, because remember it's on the other side of the highway, so that's a complication for a lift station.
Sure.
You know, you don't want to be involved in, in a, you know, uh, complex siphons and things of that nature. So we really haven't looked at it, but, uh, you do have a lot of space at the existing plant. Um, and so it's obviously easier to be, to do stuff there.
Jeff, you had a question? Nope? Okay.
I think you might have answered it, but I do appreciate your opinion about expanding our current plant, because that sounds, but if there were to be a plant on the east side, which you, you outlined some options in your email the other day, um, would, that would take some current pressure off of this plant as well, right? So to, if we get up to the eighteen million, that would still take some capacity out, so we'd actually be able to go longer with eighteen, if, if that happens?
And, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, in theory, you're absolutely correct. What, what we are evaluating is much today in the potential, um, expansion to the east side, there is, uh, an, an opportunity with development and partic, and potentially other governments to perhaps partner on a plant on the east side. However, really what, one of the key elements that we're looking at is just the overall costs. What we don't want to do is build plants that ultimately aren't going to be used, uh, essentially having to capitalize those, right? That essentially will impact a variety of, uh, of our financing components. And so we, we want to study in more detail the potential of expanding at our existing plant, um, but know that there may be a day that we actually are partnering and we're building in other locations.
Yeah, and, uh, Councilman Powell, yes?
How do environmental situations affect your processing there? I know this last weekend with the way it rained, uh, it was, it was amazing, and you get a lot of that tailwater that ends up going where. But is any of that useful or is it just basically, uh, the way it is?
Um, yeah, that's a little outside my area of expertise. I'm not a stormwater expert. We have those, uh, folks. But as far as, um, it affects the wastewater, because I just recommended today in talking to, uh, to, um, to Kim Owensby, um, because they had a, quite a surge in their plant, so I recommended that they do a, um, an, an I N I study to find out why they're getting such, so much rain infiltration at the plant, because they had quite a peak, uh, during that storm, and, and that's, you know, not normal with the, you know, we don't have combined